Mic check, Megan, can you hear us? Mic check, Megan, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
I didn't hear her, but that's fine because everybody is talking.
Oh, I heard the...
Yes. It's not signed yet?
Mic check for Megan and Councilwoman McKeever.
Yes.
I can hear you.
Two, one.
Good evening, everyone. This is High Point Mayor Cyril Jefferson convening a meeting of the High Point City Council. Here with me on the dais, we've got every member of council present, save Councilmember McKeever. We also have both Madam Manager, Madam Clerk with us, and Madam Attorney is with us virtually. We'll ask you all to join us for a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance before we get into our meeting. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We've got our agenda for this evening, and I'll ask council members if they want to take some time to review, and then when ready, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion's been made by Mayor Proton Moore and second by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Our first recognition for this evening is a proclamation for Learning Differences Awareness Month. And for this proclamation, I want to recognize Kathy Bull. Kathy, will you come join me? And this is the team, remind me from...
The Piedmont School. These are families and students and staff.
Okay, Piedmont School. Will you all please join us up here? And will you all celebrate them as they come forward, please? Good to see you. We're going to read first, but if you want to take a picture while reading, you absolutely can. Okay, alright. Whereas October is recognized as National Learning Differences Awareness Month, a time to celebrate the strengths of individuals who learn differently. And whereas learning differences affect one in five people, influencing how they process information and impacting skills such as reading, writing, and math, as well as attention and executive functioning. And whereas early identification, inclusive education, and access to appropriate supports help individuals with learning differences reach their full potential. And whereas it is vital to raise awareness, dispel misconceptions, and promote inclusion and understanding for all. And whereas the Piedmont School in High Point has for over four decades reimagined education for minds that work differently, providing individualized instruction and fostering student success. Now therefore I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of High Point, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Learning Differences Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to join the Piedmont School in acknowledging the significance of supporting individuals with learning differences and promoting a more inclusive community. Can we please celebrate the occasion? So you want to do a picture? If y'all want to slide on down? And then... Hold on, hold on, hold on. Because I want this to be a good picture for y'all. There you go. Alright, there you go. Perfect. Next, I'd love to invite up the team from Every Baby Guilford. And will you let me know if you've got anyone else here with you, aside from Every Baby Guilford?
We're all Public Health, Every Baby Guilford.
Okay, alright, come on up. Can we please clap for them as they come forward? I whispered Aggie Pride in his ear, because I wanted to share how the rest of y'all would feel about it, so... Whereas thousands of families are impacted by pregnancy and infant loss in North Carolina every year. And this devastating tragedy often occurs suddenly without warning. Whereas pregnancy and infant loss includes infant death, miscarriage, stillbirth, sudden infant death syndrome, also known as SIDS, and death of a newborn. And whereas the city of High Point wishes to acknowledge the profound lifelong grief and loss these families experience. And whereas today, we honor and remember the pregnancies and infants' loss, and recognize the painful lifelong impact on their families and loved ones. And whereas increased awareness of the causes and impacts surrounding pregnancy and infant loss may lead to greater understanding, support, and resources in our community. And whereas organizations like Every Baby Guilford are a vital resource in our community for promoting awareness of pregnancy and infant loss, and finding solutions to solve the infant mortality crisis. Now therefore I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of High Point, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to support organizations like Every Baby Guilford to help raise awareness, to prevent pregnancy and infant loss, and join together to lift up those in our community affected by this profound loss. Can we please celebrate these incredible individuals? Thank you. And we've got our Public Health Director, newly appointed Public Health Director, Courtney McFadden, who's going to provide some comments. Courtney?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. On behalf of Guilford County Division of Public Health, I want to sincerely thank you for recognizing October as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Your resolution sends a powerful message of compassion and solidarity to families who have experienced one of life's most devastating losses. Each year, far too many parents in our community endure the heartbreak of losing a pregnancy or an infant. Their pain is often silent, but it is deeply felt. By adopting this resolution, you are helping to lift that silence, honoring those families, and affirming that their grief, their babies, and their stories matter. In Guilford County, we're working through initiatives like Every Baby Guilford to understand and address the factors that contribute to pregnancy and infant loss, from access to care, to stress, to social and economic conditions that affect families' health. Our goal is not only to prevent these tragedies, but to also surround every family with every support that they need to heal and thrive. Thank you for using your voice and leadership to shine a light on this issue. Your partnership helps strengthen our shared commitment to a future where every pregnancy is supported, every baby has a healthy start, and every family feels the care of this community. Thank you.
I don't want to pronounce it incorrectly, so please bear with me. Is it Bennett Ariel? Did I say it correctly? Bennett. Now, now who's Benaya to you? Benaya's your dad. I know your dad. He's a great man. And there's also a Benisha. Is that your... Benisha, you want to come on up? Okay. Alright, and you all have brought a number of folks with you as well. Okay, alright. If you are here for the Diwali Awareness Day, will you please come forward? And will we please clap for them as they come up? Howdy, howdy. Now, I normally shake everyone's hand, but I don't know if I'm going to get through this and we get out of this meeting on time. Okay, alright. I am gonna, I'm gonna stand... I'm gonna stand like somewhere in here and read it. Okay, there we go. Alright. Now y'all all look way better than me right now. I just got to tell you. We normally don't let people up here who look better than me, but clearly. Whereas Diwali is an ancient and important festival of lights celebrated by millions of Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and Buddhists around the world. And whereas the festival is a time of joy and renewal, celebrating the triumph of light over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance. And whereas the Indian and the Poli communities throughout the triad area have greatly enriched the cultural, social, and economic fabric of the city of High Point through their contributions, traditions, and community spirit. And whereas recognizing Diwali fosters mutual understanding, diversity, and inclusion, and encourages all residents to appreciate the beauty and significance of this cultural celebration. Now therefore I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, on behalf of our City Council, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2025, as Diwali Awareness Day. Diwali Awareness Day in the city of High Point, and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating the rich traditions, a universal message of hope, peace, and light that Diwali represents. Can we please clap it up for these incredible folks? Now, they're going to want us to stack up here. And so I like to say this politely. If you're a front row person, we kindly ask you to move to the front row. And if you are a second and third row person, you move to the second and third row. That means taller people in the back, shorter people in the front. In here, I'm going to ask you right up front. If you'll just hold this. If y'all want to stand on either side of her, you can. Hold it with her. It's up to you. Thank you. Yes, you want me to try it right now? You know, I got braces in my mouth. It's going to get stuck in the metal. But I would love to take one. I would love to take one with me. Is that okay? Can I take one with me? Would you take the whole tray? Okay, alright. Here, I'll take it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alright. Alright. Hello, everybody. My name is Bennett Ariel. I am a current finance student at the University of Greensboro. Yeah, Gulf Spartans. So I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude to the city of High Point, the council for passing the resolution and proclamation for Diwali. As a member of this community, I'm truly happy and proud of this achievement. Special thanks to Mayor Cyril Jefferson and at-large Councilwoman Amanda Cook for your dedication, leadership, and commitment to our community. Diwali is a major Hindu festival, which predominantly is in Nepalean parts of India. It is known as the Festival of Lights, and has unique elements which span about five days. Your support in celebrating Diwali is, as a celebration of light, unity, and cultural harmony, means a great deal to all of us. Once again, I want to thank the entire High Point City Council and for making this possible.
Namaste. Honorable Mayor Jefferson, distinguished city officials, esteemed guests, and friends. On behalf of BAPS Swaminarayam Mandir in Greensboro and High Point and in Piedmont Triad Area, Jai Swaminarayana, Happy Diwali to all of you. It is a profound honor to stand before you today as our city officially recognizes this sacred festival. We extend our deepest gratitude to Councilwoman Amanda Cook for her vision and initiative to introduce this proclamation, and Mayor Cyril Jefferson, and the entire City Council for their leadership in approving it. Your actions sends a powerful message of unity, respect, that resonates deeply within our community. Diwali, as you know, is a festival of lights. In literal sense, it is celebration of creating light with a row of candles. It is a time when millions around the world celebrate the timeless victory of light over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance. It is a time of renewal, hope, and reflection. We light dias as our traditional lamps, not just to illuminate our homes, but to symbolize the awakening of our inner light, the light of compassion, service, and understanding. This message of inner light is very foundation of our work at our temples, our mandirs. Inspired by our guru, His Holiness Mahaswami Maharaj, we strive to live by the principle of seva, or selfless service. For us, the light of Diwali is not just a flame in a lamp. It is the spark of inspiration to serve our neighbors, to foster harmony, and to contribute positively to fabric our wonderful city. So if I may request, everyone to close our eyes and join hands in a 10-second reflection as I read the message of my guru, Mahaswami Maharaj. The message goes like this. May we walk together in unity. May Bhagwan, God, bless us all with health and prosperity. May peace prevail everywhere. Thank you. You may open your eyes. This proclamation does more than just a mark on a date on the calendar. It illuminates the beautiful diversity of our city and celebrates the shared human values that binds us all together. As the lights of Diwali shines our house, our homes, let them also inspire a renewed commitment in all our hearts to be a light for others. To experience this spirit of light and community firsthand, we warmly welcome you to join us this Saturday at BAPS Swaminarayam Mandir. We have lots of invitations with us to get more details. And not only just join us, just experience Diwali if you have not had this experience ever before. And thank you once again for this incredible honor. We wish you all a very joyous, prosperous, and a light-filled Diwali. Namaste.
Okay, at this time, I'd love to call up the team from Keep High Point Beautiful. Can we please clap for them as they come forward? On this evening, it's my honor to recognize Keep High Point Beautiful for its outstanding achievements and wavering dedication to keeping our city clean, vibrant, and sustainable. This year, Keep High Point Beautiful once again earned the Keep America Beautiful President's Circle Recognition, which is a national recognition, is that right? Demonstrating our community's commitment to the national mission of building and maintaining beautiful, livable places for all. Through diligent reporting, innovative programming, and consistent community engagement, High Point continues to lead by example. I especially want to highlight the incredible work of our Youth Advisory Council. Thirteen bright high school students representing Andrews, High Point Central, High Point Christian, the North Carolina Leadership Academy, Early College at Guilford, Early College at North Carolina A&amp;T, and Wheatmore. These young leaders not only volunteered during the High Point Big Sweep, but also shared their voices in a national Keep America Beautiful video, inspiring others to get involved. The results of 2025 speak volumes. That is, 840 volunteers, over 11,000 pounds of trash, and nearly 3,000 pounds of recycling removed. High Pointers don't litter that much, do they? Oh my. Oh my, tis tis. 100 native plants planted through our Bee City program, an outreach to more than 500 residents on protecting pollinators. And beyond environmental impact, volunteers donated 505 food items to local pantries, reminding us that community service comes in many forms. To everyone involved with Keep High Point Beautiful, thank you. Your dedication makes our city cleaner, greener, and stronger every single day. Together, we're showing what it means to take pride in High Point and keep High Point beautiful. Can we please clap it up for these incredible folks? Something tells me we're going to need two rows. Okay? At this time, we'll go ahead and move forward in our agenda. And next item for discussion is our consent agenda. And this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda items. Motion's recognized, Councilmember Holmes. Second, recognized, Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next, under general business is item 2025-428. I'm gonna give them just a moment.
While they're exiting, can I make a comment on the consent agenda, Councilmore? I just wanted to recognize, we heard a presentation at Finance Committee about the renewal of our health insurance. And it's, I don't have to tell you, it's very inflationary times, but I wanted to congratulate Angela Kirkwood and their team for producing a very good result for us for this year. They've set the mark really high, so they've got a lot of work to do for next year. But thank you very much for the results of this year's insurance. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor Proton Moore. And on that comment about a consent agenda item, I also recognize Habitat for Humanity. Appreciate the partnership that you all continue to have, seeing this opportunity here to convey some properties so we can support affordable housing throughout our city. It happens through partnerships. So appreciate the work that you're doing, and looking forward to all that comes from that. Yeah, thank you. Item 2025-428, consideration of a resolution of intent. This is a street abandonment case, 25-01. Council has requested to consider a resolution of intent to establish a public hearing day of Monday, December 15, 2025, to consider the abandonment, permanent closure that is, of 2,184-plus-foot portion, approximately 0.4 miles, of the Kersey Valley Road right-of-way, a 60-foot-wide right-of-way. The proposed abandonment is for that portion of Kersey Valley Road, abutting the city's municipal landfill, lying south of the Kivit Drive, and running southward to the northern property line of parcels addressed at 1300 and 1303 Kersey Valley Road, northern property line of Guilford County Tax Parcels 161499 and 161531. At this time, if council... At this time, if council has any questions for staff, we can call on Mr. Shannon, but if not, is there a motion to set a date for this public hearing?
So moved. Second.
I'll recognize Councilmember Harmon, and second to Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any againsts? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item is item 2025-426, public hearing regarding text amendment 2503. Council has requested to consider text amendment 2503 to amend various sections of the City of High Point's development ordinance to create the Southwest Mill Overlay District with two sub-districts, the SMO Town Center and the SMO Transitional Industrial. The SMO is designed to implement the recommendations of the Southwest Mill District Area Plan adopted by the city council on March 24, 2025. We will have a combined public hearing for this item and the next item that's to come up, which is item 2025-427. Mr. Andy Piper will do a combined presentation. We will still have separate votes on each item, though, but if you're here to speak for either one of these items, you have the opportunity to speak during public hearing. The vote will include approval of the consistency and reason for this statement when that time comes. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for text amendment and zoning map amendment, and recognize Mr. Andy Piper, our planning administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. As you said, this will be a joint presentation with separate votes at the end. I'm gonna begin by starting out with a little brief overview of the history. Back in March, you approved and adopted the Southwest Mill District Area Plan for an area covering approximately 171 acres in the area southwest of downtown. One of the plan's main recommendations is to establish a new zoning district, to support a walkable mixed-use district that also provides for some light industrial uses, consistent with what is envisioned for the area in the High Point 2045 Comprehensive Plan. In August, you directed the Planning and Development Department staff to come up with some options for implementing the recommendation without creating any downzoning per a change to the general statutes commonly referred to as House Bill 382. So we took that forward, and what we decided is the best kind of path forward was to create an overlay district that would establish some additional land uses while preserving the existing zoning currently in place. We'd do so by creating the two sub-districts that you mentioned before, Mr. Mayor, the Southwest Mill Overlay Town Center, or SMO TC, sub-district, which you can see in blue on this map, as well as the Southwest Mill Overlay Transitional Industrial, or SMO TI, sub-district, shown in red. To briefly explain what an overlay district is and what it does, so by having an overlay, what it would do is establish something that overlays the existing zoning. So it basically is on top of the existing zoning that's already in place, and it establishes certain specific standards for areas and can also allow additional uses. The analogy we used and the information that we mailed out to folks in the district and within 300 feet of the district was that of a cake. So think of a cake. The cake part is the actual existing zoning, and the frosting is the overlay district. So it lays on top of it and then allows additional uses, but also additional standards that come with it. So the main point, and you'll probably hear me repeat this a couple times tonight, is that if approved, applying the overlay district to a property would be a voluntary process. So a property owner may instead choose to preserve their existing base zoning district and follow the rules and regulations that are already present on the existing zoning. So what the text amendment, if approved, would do was expand the uses that a property owner may voluntarily choose to pursue, subject to the building and site standards that are spelled out in the overlaid zoning district text amendment before you. This would help advance the recommendations of the adopted area plan to create a walkable mixed-use district that improves connectivity and revitalizes underused spaces in the district. And again, it gives people choices and options for developing their property, or they may not choose to develop their property. So it really is an optional elective choice of the property owner, how they want to move forward. What the text amendment would not do is change the underlying zoning. So whatever zoning is in place now is how it would stay. It also does not prohibit development that the existing zoning currently allows, and it does not mandate property owners or residents choose to use the SMO district. It's a completely voluntary process. And it does not apply to any areas outside of the overlay district, outside the boundaries that you would approve with the zoning map amendment that's in companion with the text amendment. More specifically, these are the actual sections of the ordinance that would be changed. I'm not gonna go through each one. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any, about anything in particular. Some relate to the formation of the actual district itself or the administration of it. Most importantly, how it applies to avoid any of the downzonings that is not allowed by state law without consent of the property owner. It also adds references where necessary for the SMO, including in the table of permitted uses, to allow that additional range of options for uses that could be established in the district. So I'll be happy to answer any specific questions. I will just conclude by letting you know that the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing at their meeting on September 23, and recommended approval as recommended by staff by a vote of eight to zero, and that consistency statement that was based on is in your packet, and would be something else that you'll need to approve for both items going forward. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, here is the map of the district, and I'll just leave it there, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
It's not, it's a comment, not a question. I just want to thank staff and the Neighborhood Association for having the staff speak last week about what we're just talking about here. I appreciate the staff being there for the meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Harmon.
Yeah, I appreciate that invite as well.
Yeah, and I'll make a comment. Yeah, I want to dite what Councilmember Harmon just said. You guys have done a really, really great job. Thank you so much for coming up with a way that we can move forward with this. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I just want to make a comment to thank Councilwoman Peters, who has worked very tirelessly to find creative solutions when the law changed in the state, and has advocated for the community to be able to grow and develop and add some of these uses. So I just want to recognize her.
Any other questions for staff? At this time, we'll move to hear from folks who have signed up to speak during our public hearing. I'll recognize, the last name is Smith, and the first name looks like it starts with Flax. No questions or comments or anything? Okay, thank you. Next, we've got Pam Watson-Cook. Would you like to speak during public hearing?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during our public hearing? If so, go ahead and come forward. We gotta go, somebody. If you'll state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes to address council about this agenda item.
My name is Chadwick Stogner, 801 Miller Street, High Point. So I've spoke here before and touched on this overlay district, and I love the vision that y'all have cast and worked towards to create this district. I mean, it's kind of speaks to everything that I was hoping when I bought the property to do, and it's funny how that, you know, your vision and my vision kind of have dovetailed through this. So I really like the aspiration of it, and I plan on using it. I mean, I've got a building that it's got an area where I want to do a showroom, it's got some area where I want to have artist spaces, and I love the artisanal manufacturing portion. So I know, and I've spoke to other people that have property, and we all support this overlay district. I just sent y'all all an email too, just kind of showing some vision of other, along belt lines, of other developments that I've been associated with. And again, I'm just gonna preach that, you know, the juxtaposition of the history of the area, because really, I mean, the belt line is gonna kind of connect all these historical mills and then hopefully attract new industry. Maybe it's not a creative industry, maybe it is. And then just blend with the neighborhood and create such a beautiful, I call it almost like a necklace, where these mills kind of create a string along the belt line. And, you know, I just want to make sure and encourage you, and you know this, I mean, look at the new hotel. They took the old building and they took, you know, and they built a new building around it, and it's just incredible, the effect that has. And they talked about this being a cake, and, you know, yeah, I just, you know, if you don't have that juxtaposition of old and new, then it can look cookie cutter, or it can just take a long time to mature. You know, people with less money need to go in and have an existing structure, because it's not as expensive to build from the ground up. So, and they need the space and the freedom to grow, and I just, I've seen where, and heard stories of where that's been difficult, and I just want to make sure we're all rowing in the same direction. It doesn't, you know, make sense to, you know, spend money, tax dollars to renovate on one side of the tracks and then tear down on the other side of the tracks without some more robust discussion or some vision casting. Last time I was up here, I said maybe there needs to be some sort of liaison or some meeting, because, I mean, y'all and the council manage your form of government, and y'all are basically the board directors. I mean, you set the vision, and you, you know, can step in and kind of say, hey, let's think about some other ways where we can work together, work a little bit more closely so we're all rowing in the same direction, because, I mean, I know that's what I want to do and the other people that I've talked to want to do, but it's, it can get hard, you know, to develop, and this is gonna take a while. It's not gonna happen overnight, these, you know.
Mr. Stotner.
Three minutes?
Well, let, allow me to ask this question. Are you here to speak for or against this item?
Oh, I just said that I love it, and I support it. I, when I knows, support it. So I'm just saying, to get to where y'all want to be and where we want to be, it's gonna, it's gonna take some give and take.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Collins, you want to go ahead and come forward? Mr. Collins, if you want to go ahead and come on forward? Yeah, they'll come. You go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We represent the South Side Neighborhood Association. Here in the city of High Point, I serve as their volunteer president. First, I'd like to thank council members and staff for being available and coming over to the meeting and sharing a little more about the implications of the Mill District and the intended and unattended consequences on community. Because I think initially during the meeting, some felt they weren't heard originally, and that's the thing, it's a communication thing that we are really trying to address, because with progress, you know, as we move forward, some are, come along at different stages, and their understanding is what it is. So we have to move them forward. I do stand here with members of the Neighborhood Association, and actually, this overlay district has caused us to have new members, so we're very thankful for that. Tongue in cheek, sorry. We, HB 317, when we came earlier in the year, we didn't feel that it really addressed certain issues or the, that we tried to express to council and staff, and I think there was a response that did address our four initial issues, and we're still waiting on those, some of those suggestions to come to fruition. So as we move forward with this plan, we really want for the city and those involved to be mindful of that and help us move some of those issues forward. I won't reiterate those here. Now, I think it has been expressed in community. As we, our motto for our neighborhood is embracing our neighborhood for change. We are so thankful for the improvements, the infrastructure, new housing that has come to our side of town, because we know that historically it has been adversely affected with divestment, disinvestment, redlining. So we are very, very appreciative, and I have with us some new members here. I have some in community who've lived their entire lifetime. So we have moved beyond wonder if to now things are happening, and this Mill District represents another part of the progress on this inner-city section of High Point. So I want to say that, lastly, and others might have some comments as well, economic development and community development should go hand in hand. Economic development and community development should go hand in hand. Thank you for your time. One thing that would help us for your consideration is, I know you're prepared this evening to take a vote, but still others are just finding out about this process. So if it doesn't hurt, we would ask that we table it this evening so we can get more involvement from people in community, and so that they can be aware and not feel as if they've missed an opportunity. So thank you for your time. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Collins, allow me to ask, when you say there's people who haven't been involved in the process, you're saying they haven't had an opportunity?
That's correct.
When you say they haven't had an opportunity, you're saying they weren't invited to events?
I'm not saying invited. Sometimes when meetings occur, they occur during daytime and people working, because we have to be mindful of the community in which we serve. So they can't often get away and plug in to ask their questions. Even when we scheduled the meeting last week, I unfortunately had to be away, and so did our vice president, but others who do have questions can't always. So if there's a series of events...
This meeting last week, it was in the evening time?
I'm sorry?
This meeting last week, was this daytime or evening time?
Six o'clock. That we invited.
So it was evening time?
Yes.
Okay. Have folks reached out to you with questions, saying they didn't get a chance to ask us about it?
During the P&amp;Z meeting particularly, and then even last week, people just can't, there's a lot of interest in our area, and this goes a long way, in my belief, of restoring that trust that was broken early on, this time last year. So if we can hear people out, some, I could, you know, do the deep dive, but I say yes, sir, to answer your question. If you have more availability, more meetings, then we can have that confidence of knowing that both the city and the community are moving forward.
I just want to make sure I'm clear here. So the meeting was not during the day. I mean, it was during the evening. Folks couldn't make it to last week. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was also in the evening. Folks couldn't make it to that one. You're saying there is actual people who have said that I've got questions and no one's answering them? Is that what you're saying?
They, yes, because one thing is that last week was the first time that we had the one-on-one with council members and staff to address even issues. So that was, I think, the, some felt they weren't heard during the P&amp;Z meeting. They felt, and now I'm the messenger here, that it was preordained to move through the meeting and the session. So that's why when we had our Neighborhood Association meeting, which is always the first Thursday... first Thursday of the month, we had a second meeting because the feedback was that there was more discussion at the P&amp;Z meeting outside of the meeting per the community than there was during the meeting itself.
Councilmember Peters, you have a question or comment here?
And this is for Andy Piper. Do you remember the date that we had the big, huge presentation and meeting? I think there may have been three or 400 people at the Southside Rec Center. Do you remember the date of that meeting?
That was far. I don't remember the exact date, but it was January, mid-January, January 14th. We do have a project webpage, may be able to find it on there.
Okay. And do you recall, there was close to like three or 400 people, is that correct?
Several, yeah. Couple hundred plus, yes.
It was in the evening. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. So, Mr. Collins, you're saying that there's people who in the... Because this was nine months ago, and the nine months since then haven't had a chance to get their questions answered?
I think nine months ago, the focus was on HB 317, which was the downzoning bill. And there was strong result regarding that intended. But we move forward now with the overlay. And frankly, it was not until an article in the HPE that I became informed of it, the overlay. And what I did do when I informed the community through social media was ask to be informed. I think at that particular time, I used the vernacular of the Atlanta Falcons and said, "Rise up," but it was misinterpreted. Just be informed.
So, the meeting nine months ago, I actually think I recall these past nine months. I know the House bill's been part of our discussion, Mr. Collins, but all along, the House bill was only a part of the discussion because what we wanted to do was make sure we could do some rezoning along this area to create this district. So, the district conversation has not just started. The district conversation's been talked about for quite some time.
Agreed.
Do you agree to that?
Agreed.
So, you're saying in all the time we've been talking about the district, people have not had the opportunity to get their questions answered?
I think if we can do a better job of meeting people where they are in their understanding of it, not... We all want to be part of solutions, not necessarily to not be in that space.
Will you give me some examples of meeting people where they are that we haven't done yet?
I certainly can.
I'm going to take some notes. You go ahead.
Okay, we can confer with my group. I don't want to just speak for the group. I always like to.
You're saying there's people here who feel like there's things we haven't done yet to talk to residents? So, we'd love to hear it.
Absolutely.
This council created a transparency engagement and communications committee, to be very clear, y'all. Because if it's one thing I don't traffic in, is all the behind-the-scenes stuff. I am very transparent. I hope you know that by now. Let us know what we haven't done right.
That's our level of engagement, Mr. Mayor.
And we will do it. So, tell me, you said meet people where they are. Tell me the ideas you have for how we can do it that we have not done.
Mr. Mayor, everyone has not been on an educational level. So, you know, one's been to college, others just finished high school, and some didn't finish grade school. So, the jargon and all the information that you have, that you're sending out, needs to be fifth or eighth grade level for some, so everybody can understand. You know, for example, like Social Security, they send out a lot of information. What is it saying? You know, so you need to make it plain. So, plainer than plain, so that they can understand exactly what's going on with their properties and what you're asking them to do. So, if we can have someone to have a meeting so that we can... And most of us, you know, everything is visual. So, you know, I would suggest that you bring it to some of us in that venue.
Allow me to ask a question then. And completely appreciate what you're saying here about jargon and terms, how that can get lost sometimes, and the usage of visuals. The opportunity for people to say, hey, I don't get it. We've given those opportunities. Do you feel like people are using those opportunities? Do you feel like, you know, when something's said, are people saying, hey, I don't get it? Are people saying, I've got more questions? Are people using those opportunities? That's probably the question I have here.
I think they're afraid to ask questions and they don't know what questions to ask. So, if, you know... I mean, I'm new on the South Side, but it's like, I, you know, I went to college, I didn't understand exactly what was going on, but my sister-in-law used to work for planning and development in Missouri. And so, she's explaining the whole process to me so that I can understand what's going on. So, and I finished college. So, and I couldn't understand what they were saying, you know. So, what are they doing? Are they trying to take my property? Are they saying that they want to buy it? Or what do you want to do? I mean, what are they saying? You know, so, that's just some of the things that I noticed. Because we had a lot of people attend our South Side meeting that are not here today because they don't know what questions to ask, Mr. Mayor. They don't know what's going to, you know, whether they ask something, they get in trouble or say the wrong thing, you know, so...
Yeah, I am sympathetic to that. I hope you know that. I'm very sympathetic to that. And I get that part too, not sure what questions to ask sometimes when it's... Let's do this. What are the concerns that people have? Share the concerns so we can... Because that's what this public hearing is about. We want to know what the concerns are.
My concern is that I did sit with city staff last week and also with the consultant. And for over an hour, we went through the text amendment and I asked for it to be explained to me. So, to come tonight and say it's like layering a cake, in that meeting, it was more like sausage. You have to trust that sausage tastes good in the end, but how it's made is rather different. And that's my personal impression.
Yeah. So, the concern is that the way it's being explained is not good enough?
You would expect the professionals to be very clear, but they weren't clear with each other. So, how can they be clear with me? And that, again, is my impression. So, that's why I'm saying a little more time, maybe if we are creating a cake, we can bake it a little more. All right? Don't take it out too soon.
Okay. So, I can feel some folks wanting to say some things. Let's go Mayor Protem, we'll go Councilmember Cook, then we'll go Councilmember Peters. And then if anyone else wants to jump in, please feel free to.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the presentation that Mr. Piper made tonight to us, can you point out anything within that that jumped out at you that either seemed like glaringly didn't understand or unfair? Because in these cases and these zonings, you know, it's outlined where the areas that are going to be affected. It's outlined that the development and ownership is, still can either go either way, they choose to. There's not a forced hand here. It's our attempt to give the people in that area that own their property to still do as they do, but for us to try to move forward with the Southwest growth and renovation. So, was there something that wasn't clear in tonight's presentation?
I think the moment now has caused...
I'm sorry?
The moment has caused one of our members, who has a deeper understanding of this type of work to come forward. So, thank you very much.
Can I just get named for the record? I know you say you're a new member of the town. By the way, thank you for your service too. What's your name?
My name is Flaxine Smith.
Oh, Ms. Smith. Okay, yeah, yeah.
I'm so sorry, y'all. Let me apologize because I thought I was signing in not to speak.
Well, you're speaking now, so you did it right. So, this is perfect.
I know. Thank you.
And then this is Ms. Watson-Cook?
That's right.
Okay, Ms. Watson-Cook.
That's my sister.
You want to share with us?
Yeah, they threw me into the bus. I think one of the things, as my sister was saying earlier, is that making it plain and bringing it down and making it real to the people because they don't understand initially, as far as paperwork that they got, and even the pictures with the overlay, it talked about Section 3.481. It talked about Section 218, whatever. When they got their packet, as far as having their meetings every first Thursdays, that information on there wasn't, well, what is this Section 2.81? It's not in with our packet. And so, when you pick that up there, we don't have that in any of our documentation. It's like, well, what does that mean? And how does it affect me? So, that's some of the question, along with lack of knowledge and education, understanding legalistic terminology. And so, they don't know what question to ask, how 2.81 affects me and my property that might be in either the red zone or the blue zone. How has this overlay affected my property? And you say, I don't have to do anything. If I want to develop, that's fine, as long as I stay within the mandates. Okay, well, what are those new mandates? That's what wasn't understood because it wasn't given to them. It just told you what section to get to. Everybody doesn't have access to go there to find it. And when they do, they don't really understand it because of the terminology. And so, someone needs to be there to break it down plain in elementary jargon to them. This is what it means. You're right here on this corner, on this block of Amos and Taylor and Green, and this is how it's going to affect your property. The other question that came up, which involved HB 317 House Bill, well, eminent domain, because that question also came up. Eminent domain is not a problem. Oh, but wait a minute. If you do go back and look, the only way eminent domain can be an issue with rezoning, whether it's an overlay or what, to keep from having issues with homeowners, if for whatever reason with upgrading, it doesn't involve changes to utilities. We all know that in a rezoning and redevelopment, rezoning is going to occur to have upgrades to all utilities. We know that. And where do we set at? Eminent domain could possibly be an issue. Well, that hasn't been answered. So, when you go back and research, and I'm kind of a research nerd, and yes, I have worked in a different state with this, so I kind of understand a little bit of it where someone else is not going to know, oh, you need to go in here and understand what that says and research it.
So, for you and your experience, the presentation that Mr. Piper gave tonight was very clear and precise. You understood it?
I kind of understood it, yes.
Okay.
I could break it... And I knew where, as he explained it, I knew where to go and look for that information or ask the right question to get a packet that happened to have a listing of every parcel listed that is involved in this overlay and also a listing of what the different sections, whether it started from number one all the way through five, and all the different subsections underneath it that had it in there that explained. So, I could go back, just as the one that was up earlier with the 3.5 and the 4.19 up there, where I could go and actually pull it up, look at it, and see, oh, this is what it's saying. Everyone didn't have that, so they don't understand what you're saying.
Well, I appreciate that. We'll see where council goes with this on the voting part tonight. But I can think I'll speak for me, not for the rest of council. They can do that. If this passes tonight, I don't foresee that as not being transparent or being able, because this is the start of a process. This is not a finished product. And it will continue to evolve and, you know, to work within the guidelines that have to be statutory or ordinance or otherwise as we go forward. But I feel like we've certainly been trying to give opportunity for people to speak, and we want everyone to be able to have the opportunity to get their questions answered and feel as comfortable as they can. But I just, I still feel, I still don't think there was any objection to the fact that the presentation tonight was pretty straightforward and clear.
Councilmember Cook?
Thank you for raising the issue of literacy because I am very passionate about, we should never have an assumption of literacy, and especially when it comes to property, it can be very scary when we're talking about that. So, thank you for raising that concern, and I think that we all took that to heart in how we move forward. I did pull up my notes from March. So, as I understood it from the public hearing that night, the four issues that y'all brought forth were the possibility of tax increases on your property due to development that might happen as a result of this. Water quality, which we did have a follow-up meeting, and I don't remember that anybody wanted to continue working with the city, and I know that there might be reasons why people did not want to continue. But we did come to address the water quality concerns, and I don't think that that is related to this. Am I speaking out of turn when I say that? That the water quality would not get worse due to this?
No, I think we couched it with intended and unintended consequences.
I just want to make sure I could take that off of this list. And then...
Well, no, actually regarding, there were two issues surrounding the water quality.
The creek and then also the pipes. Right, correct. And then the greenway transparency, which I think we are also working on being able to provide more updates about that. I think that's coming in 2026 about, we're still not there yet. So, I think, would you say that the biggest issue still sitting on the table for you is the fear of tax increases due to development that might come here?
It's one of the issues, yes.
Okay. And I've raised that concern as well, and I did agree that that can be an unintended consequence. So, I just want to reaffirm that. I think several members have that fear. However, I would also like to partner that with. The disinvestment issue has led to this heavy industrial area not having access to things like childcare and grocery and things that would be optional for the landowners, that property owners that want to develop here. They did not have that option before with the previous zoning. And they may not choose that now, but they may. And so, that was the, I think the takeaway of the presentation was that they have options that did not exist before that provide amenities. And part of the unintended consequences also, access to amenities might raise the level of the tax cost. And I would be willing to work with the community to bring forth something that could address that. If there's an organization that wanted to talk about doing a land trust, I have not heard that presentation or option brought by anybody in South Side, but I would be interested in hearing that if that's what you're considering.
The former executive director of the Durham Community Land Trust sat in on several meetings during the processing of when I was, I'm now a former board chair of Southwest Rural Foundation. So, it has been a part of the conversation. I think it wasn't necessarily, that went nowhere because we brought that forward as an option to help empower our area. And you're quite right, we're speaking as the Neighborhood Association, but community association has different needs. And that's where we're... And that's where we're vastly moving towards and within the community itself. Southside Neighborhood Association has been here since the early 1900s. We were put there to service those factories and actually the lineage of those who in community remember having worked in those factories. So, one of the issues we're dealing with in community is that whatever it took to acquire a home on those wages and to maintain and sustain those very present issues in our community. When we speak of, uh, the newness in community, some families have lost their property. It's real, okay? Because of what has occurred. I think we're all familiar with that. So, Mr. Moore, to your, your question about four things that were presented this evening, that's as clear as we've ever heard it, but it's the first time we've heard it. This is why I'm asking for more time.
Councilman Peters?
Yes, sir. Well, first of all, to my fellow council members, I'm definitely not in favor of tabling this for two weeks. I feel like the neighborhood has been given more than ample time. The, uh, every, every first Thursday of the month is a Southside Neighborhood Association meeting. This past month, it was canceled. I found out the day before because I, I wanted to attend. I wanted to see what was on the agenda. Last week, President Collins requested that staff and some of council members meet at a special meeting in the evening at the Southside Rec Center. He was not in attendance. The five folks that are right there were all there, and Bobby Coleman and Sylvester Smith. Andy Piper and Heidi Gilante were there with the presentation, paperwork. We were there for an hour and a half answering questions. Eminent domain did get brought up, and we made it very clear that that had nothing to do with the overlay. A lot of the issues that they have will continue to happen, and we need to find out and how we can help them with different things with the community housing. But the overlay does not affect any of their concerns. So, I am not in favor of tabling this. We've worked to, and I'm, I'm gonna say one other thing. Doc Kearns passed away this morning. She was a renegade for the people. She cared about community. She cared about being able to improve this heavy industrial corridor so that it wasn't filled with pollutants and blighted buildings. And it just makes me really sad that all the hard work that we've put forth for so long to try to improve quality of life and create something that can be really great. It just makes me sad, and I just...
Thank you, Councilwoman Peters. I think I saw Councilmember Holmes wanting to say something.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Mayor, I, just, just briefly, um, I, we've been having a discussion around unintended consequences, but I also think we need to have the discussion around intended benefits. There's a lot of things that will benefit the area because of this overlay. Now, just to be clear, your individual participation in this is strictly voluntary. With your property, you don't have to do anything that you don't want to, and the zoning does not change for you. But what it does do is it expands the opportunity for people to solve some of the major issues that exist currently in this, in this area. And so, there's unintended consequences. If you say taxes are gonna go up, associated with that tax increase will also be a value increase of your property. So, that may be an unintended consequence, but it's also an intended benefit. So, I just wanna make sure that we're all understanding that unless you participate in upgrading your property, nothing is gonna change for you. But the opportunity for other businesses and, uh, amenities to come into the area to solve some of the issues that have long plagued this district, that's, that's an intended benefit. And I wanna make sure that we understand of what we're getting here, not potentially of what we may, uh, lose or incur here. And so, I just wanna make sure that, that we all understand that.
Thank you, Councilmember Holmes. Councilmember Harmon, does see you? And anyone else who hasn't had a chance to speak yet on this? Um, first, I wanna say to Ms. Watson Cook, agri pride. Um, next, I wanna say, um, thank y'all. I hope y'all know that this is a council that absolutely values resident voice, and we go to great lengths to get resident voice. Um, I know, I mean, the amount of times I've been down on Southside just in the past few months, all opportunities to connect and engage, um, we, we value it immensely. And Councilmember Holmes sort of brought up this last point. It's another point that Councilmember Peters, uh, just brought up. We wouldn't be talking about this district if we had not spent years digging into the ways that we can improve and add value, especially based on what we've heard about what folks wanna see down on Southside. I've had folks reach out and say, we need childcare on Southside. Now, you may think government needs to create a childcare center. I'm not of that opinion. But we can facilitate conditions for that to happen. And one of the best ways to do that is, a property's gotta be used for it. And right now, the way it's set up, most of these properties are set up for you to mix cement and a bunch of other, like, heavy industrial stuff. We gotta set this up for it to be a mixed-use development, which means that you can see different types of properties being used for different things. And some of those opportunities could be childcare. But the beautiful grocery stores, it could be all types of things. But we're not gonna get that if we don't do this overlay district. Trust me, we've spent years talking about how to get to this point. And it is so important to us, it is so important to us that, like, we understand the history when you say that.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, certain communities have been, if I could just say it, y'all, certain communities, um, have been marginalized, disenfranchised, and under-invested in. Uh, what I can assure you is this council is not marginalizing, it's not disenfranchising, and if anything, we're trying to make sure investment can happen. That means something to us. You all have heard the story of my boys growing up on Southside, my wife growing up on Southside. Southside means something to us. What we need you all to do, probably in this case, is to trust us that no one's trying to pull the wool over anyone's eyes right now. I can tell you for a fact, Councilmember Peters, I see her in tears trying to figure out how she can do her best to help Southside. I know that. And there are folks wanting to get invested in what's happening down there. But right now, the way zoning is laid out, we can't do that. So, the overlay gives property owners a chance who want to get involved to get involved. And those who don't want to, they don't have to. It's almost like you get to have your cake and eat it too here.
Yeah.
But some of the concerns about property tax increases, that, that is a very real concern. Regardless of where we go in the city, if you start to see investment happen, property values are gonna go up. Now, are there some solutions to land trusts and things of that nature? Absolutely. We can talk about that.
Yeah.
But that's a conversation, just like this overhear is a conversation. Other concerns around water, we've talked about that. Now, personally, if you wanna put me on the soapbox and talk about the federal government taking twenty, nearly twenty million dollars of our money to put somewhere else, I'm, I can see my folks looking at me now. I'm not even gonna go there, but I got all types of issues with that because we're supposed to have money helping us with the water issue on Southside right now. Federal government chose to go a different way. I'm, I'm gonna leave it right there. I promise. I'm gonna stop.
Yeah.
Um, if you wanna talk about eminent domain, I, you made a good point about could you see utilities need to be improved, so on and so forth. Uh, right now, those are things that we'd have to navigate. If, if the development led to something like that, then we would navigate that. Just like, like, right now, we could do eminent domain in a lot of places, right? If we decided that we're gonna take and put parking at your house, I mean, a government could do that. No reasonable city council is just gonna do that just to do it, right? We're gonna do it where it makes sense to do it. Um, to the issue of the greenway, trying to make sure that that can create the kind of walkability and access to amenities, like, these, these things matter. I can tell you for a fact, this council's been working very, very, very hard. And the issue that I, I think I have here is that, um, we talked about meeting people where they are, and I've asked, like, what does that look like that we haven't done? That wasn't made clear. Now, your point about people understanding, I get that. People's concerns, I get that. But we present the opportunities. And I am of the mindset that if we present the opportunities for conversation, you can either show up or not show up. You can talk or not talk. We've met in the evening, we've met in the daytime, we've met on weekends, we've met on weekdays. It's been going on for a while. This is not some situation where we are restricting and disenfranchising people. That is not the case. And if you're saying to us, well, some people haven't taken advantage of the opportunity to talk to you because they're scared, so we need you to table this until they get unscared, respectfully, we don't know that that's gonna happen.
No, it's not.
We do not know that that's gonna happen. So, I know you got another comment. We're gonna let you have this comment. But I can tell you that we're doing our best right now to hear and do what's right for Southside. Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I, I agree wholeheartedly with your, uh,
Yes.
assertions. Case in point regarding this information and getting it out there, that's why we recently got two new members who are property owners directly affected. So, I, I appreciate that. To Councilwoman Peters' point about my absence, well, this isn't about Tony Collins. This is about the Southside. So, I told our membership, do, and this might add, is a volunteer position that I've been in since 2008. The Horns are here, and they've been on this journey much longer than I. You know, the Southside Revitalization Plan was 2007. We're living into that. So, I hear your points very clearly because, yes, change has come, and, uh, we're thankful for it. Yes, at some point, you have to move forward. And we, I'll reiterate that we are here to, um, embrace our neighborhood for change. Uh, it certainly is at the will of this council to move forward or hear us. And we'll just move from there because everything has consequences.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Horn would like to.
Ms. Horn, will you state your name and, uh, address for the record?
Um, Denise Horn. Even if Mr. Collins don't be at the meeting, we know what to do. Because sometime, he can't be at all the meetings, so we go ahead and do the meeting anyway. We have people that can stand there for any of us if we ain't there at the meeting. So, we already knew he had got called away, and we all came and did what we had to do at the meeting. We knew that they was gonna bring the people down there. We had enough people there to ask questions. All of us was there. It was probably about three or four more people there, but we knew Mr. Collins had got called away. So, when he don't come, we still know what to do.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Is anyone else who wishes to speak during the public hearing? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, I'm Constance Reynolds. I'm at 316 Cheryl Avenue. I am, um, not a representative of this side of town. I'm just a High Point resident that likes to come to city council meetings when she can. Um, but I'm just listening to this hearing, and I hear more than one opportunity is at stake. And so, what I'm wondering is which opportunity is more urgent and which opportunity is more important, okay? So, the, um, community represented right here, these are some representatives of this neighborhood, of the landowners there, and they've communicated clearly here, just as clear as the presentation, that it's not, it's not understood by most, and there is a level of fear and uncertainty. They're asking for an opportunity for those in the cracks to be filled. Now, I know y'all been talking about this all year. I know y'all been meeting about this all year. But I also know that there is a historic divestment in this area. There's historic trauma in the neighborhoods in this area, and there is a built-in lack of trust. So, you have an opportunity to build it. But here's the thing. And I hear Monica Peters' point, and I know how much red tape it's taken and how much you've had to maneuver around to even get here. I get that. So, what is there to be lost if you take a little bit more time to have one more meeting, to be a little bit more intentional about, oops, didn't mean to click that, about reaching who needs to be reached? We don't know, they know what they've got to lose, but they don't know what y'all have to lose if you hold off voting on it today. Can anybody speak on that? What can we lose? What, what does the city lose if it takes a little bit more time to meet the residents where they are? I'm just curious. If you wait, and I'm not even saying wait, if you hear the people, you care deeply about what the people have to say. It's not about making sure these five get it. It's the rest of them who aren't here right now. And, um, there's a whole lot of rabbit holes to go down with this whole communication and transparency with government and planning. I would like to plug, uh, you know, community oversight that exists, but there's still a disconnect, and it's blatant, and it's clear, and it's been there, and it's continuing to grow. So, how do you bridge the gap? How do you make sure that they get it? Is it important to y'all, or what, what opportunity can be missed? Because some people need to vote on it tonight. I'm just curious why. What's there to be lost?
I'll go ahead and answer your question, Ms. Reynolds.
Yeah.
I can tell you for a fact that there are property owners ready to develop in the area to do some of the things we've been talking about, to create some of that life, bring more housing, so on and so forth. They've been waiting on this vote for a few years at least.
Do they want the people's buy-in or no?
They do, which is why we got it, Ms. Reynolds.
So, they need another level of understanding?
Yeah. Ms. Reynolds?
Can I ask a question in, in conjunction with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Well, what, what I was gonna say is, I, I wanna be careful because there's this sort of, this moral argument we're trying to have here about either move forward or hear us. We're not gonna do that, y'all. We just had a very long conversation about how much hearing we've been doing. There was a comment just made about an opportunity to, like, care about what people are saying or vote tonight. I reject that. We've been hearing, and we've been caring, and there are people who have been waiting on this for quite some time. Now, if we thought for any reason that there was a, a legitimate issue with, uh, this happening, people's properties being seized or any of that, then, like, you're right, we'd pause. If there was any real legitimate issue about this being rushed through, you're right, we would pause. But we've spent years, and I can tell you for a fact, the phone calls I've had with folks who have said, hey, we wanna be invested in this side of town, not because it's making us a lot of money, but we believe in what the city's trying to do. Not everyone needs to go to North High Point to invest up there. There are some people who could take their money to North High Point right now, and they said, no, we know that this is a mission for you all. It's a mission for us too. But I can't keep holding on as what these people are saying.
And as the representative of North High Point, I can concur with the mayor, um, that there is a great interest, uh, in development in, in North High Point, but there's also a love of this area where people want to see it returned, uh,
To its glory.
And to its glory.
Yep.
Hold on, Mr. Commons, uh, Mayor Portion Moore, and then we'll go to Councilman Andrew.
The trust issue is always one that, that you have to work at, um, in collective trust, individual trust. So, we could, we can talk about that, but if, if we take action to move forward tonight, positive intentions can begin. And the, uh, the door is not gonna close on this vote to this council's willingness to take phone calls, to take emails, and to come to appointments when we can to continue to hear the concerns as we go forward. That's not the intent. So, um, I think that, um, the trust factor is always elusive and, and kinda comes from everybody's different perspective. But, uh, i- if we move forward on this vote tonight, uh, I know that, that my phone won't stop answering your calls. Uh, my emails won't stop seeing, but we can set a date. I mean, we can pick one right now. That's, uh, you know, November the 11th. I don't even know what day it is. Whatever. There you go. Okay, go with the 12th.
Perfect.
But my point is that everybody can get their phone and their calendar out right now, and then we can get the, I don't have many, fifteen hundred people in the area, and we're still gonna come back to this same place because all of us can't get to that meeting. All of y'all can't. all of us can't get to that meeting, all of y'all can't get to that meeting, but that doesn't mean we stop the dialogue of think fundamentally and technically. This is a solid effort to make that area better, and I believe that it's the appropriate time to move forward with it tonight and not, you know, not back out at this point with my phone and their phone and staff as well. Staff has worked extremely hard on this for a long, long time, and it's a box, uh, that's on our agenda to try to make better in that area, one of our goals, and, um, I feel like it is time to move forward.
Councilman Andrew?
I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Holmes was saying. It's easy for the wards five and six to just sit back and say, "Hey, we've got all the development," but this council, together, united, wants to see the entire city grow and thrive and develop, and that's why we are all in, I'm speaking for the council up, um, forgive me, in support of this so that we can move forward in bringing the much-needed development to that area of town.
Any other councilmembers have a question here? Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during a public hearing? You go ahead and come on forward, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, thank you, guys. Thank you.
We really do appreciate, uh, you letting, letting us, uh, say our piece.
Yes, ma'am.
And we appreciate the fact that you're interested in the Southside community, and we thank you. Thank you for, uh, all that you're doing. We're not trying to negate what you're trying to do.
Understood.
We just wanted to bring forth, uh, some of the things that they say at the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's, that's, that's all we were trying to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, but we really do appreciate, Mr. Mayor, you, uh, taking the time out, and you know, we've been bipping for a while here, so we really do appreciate you lis, taking the time to listen to us, and we are grateful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Alex Dummett, and we own 310, 319, 322, 426, and 433 Ennis Street. Um, and I honestly, I want to speak in favor of this, but also just kind of speak to what we're planning to doing and the approach, because I think it's important, and I wasn't planning on speaking, I'm, I'm speaking mostly to the community. Um, you know, several members of council know, we started acquiring a few years ago. It, I didn't break ground in part because I have been speaking to nonprofit leaders, to city leaders. I know the name of our next-door neighbor, I know that they want townhomes. Um, we spent, sorry, I get, so, like, passionate, I get emotional, but we, I'm a social entrepreneur. We want what's best. We want to build with communities. What I would like to do is hear these concerns, hear these builds, and talk about it honestly and see what solutions as a developer we can offer. So I'm not coming in saying, "This is what I'm doing." I'm saying, "What do we need? What do we need to build on these properties?" We acquired them with that intention. Also, we've been able to put in place a lot of infrastructure such as rent-to-own financing options. We've been able to put in place, um, you know, not, unaccredited investment options. So if you live in these neighborhoods and you want to make an investment into the growth, and maybe you're not moving or buying or something like that, but you could be included. Um, we're looking at other ways to work with nonprofits, to place entrepreneurs in these areas, as well as, uh, working with veterans and things like that to hire within the community. So, um, it's been a couple of years of a spider web. It has been very intentional. It's been a really long time coming, um, but I want to kind of speak for, I, this is going to embarrass me, but my last breath, sorry. You guys are talking from a perspective of someone that went to college. I did not go to college. I did not go to high school. I am someone who has been guided by the documents that have been produced by the city. I have called the city and said, "Hey, I don't know, I own this property, I don't know what I can do." Herb and Andy have always been really helpful in guiding me all the way through, start to finish, both verbally, in picture, in every other form, and I'm also happy to meet with the community and help, you know, if I can assist connecting people directly. But I did want to kind of speak to some of these concerns because they are real. Gentrification is a real thing. Pushing people out of their homes is a real thing. But there are ways that we as developers and people of our community can work together to build something that's a great investment for what you guys already have, but also build on what people, you know, what the full potential is. And so I think I'd love to hear the ideas. I'd love to hear, if we need childcare, let's put childcare. If we need grocer, let's put grocer. Uh, you know, I don't know normal rules. I didn't go to college. There's no one, there's no finance guy telling me what I'm supposed to do. So if we need to build the community a certain way, I say we do it. Um, so anyway, I just wanted you guys to kind of know, as a developer, I know that you guys are seeing a lot of change. I'm seeing a lot of change, people taking down houses, clearing out driveways, all kinds of stuff. It's also a really exciting time. That means that your investment that you made years ago can really, can really flourish for you and have a new opportunity too. So I hope that we can bring that. I hope that we can be inclusive in that. I hope that you hear that not only, I, I receive the city as helping at it with open ears and, you know, really supportive. I, as a developer, hope to be really supportive in what we're doing, um, if the city approves us or not, you know, in whatever shape it needs to come in. But that was the intention. I came to town saying, "I want some of the hardest stuff that's going on." I very much so have, I talked to, you know, Carol at Lydia House, I've talked to some of these different, you know, people that are in the neighborhood. So I did want to kind of make those comments here as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak during a public hearing? No, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll make a motion to approve item 2025 dash 426.
Second.
And state that this is, uh, consistent and reasonable along with our consistency and reasonableness statements as included in the staff report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to Councilmember Peters. Any discussion on the motion?
I just want to reiterate that I'm open, I'm, I serve on community development along with three other members, that if anybody wants to work with our community development department to address the concerns, I'm open to having that conversation, and I can share my contact information if you need it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item is item 2025 dash 427. I'll entertain a motion on this one. So moved. Second. Whoever makes the motion, you got to, the, uh, approval of the consistency and reasonableness statements, that's included in the staff report. Yes. Okay. Your second, still goes with that?
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item is item 2025 dash 431. Consideration of a reappointment to the Human Relations Commission. Council's requested to confirm the reappointment of Eric Fushi, uh, to the Human Relations Commission, term effective November 1st, 2025, and expiring on November 1st, 2027. Any discussion on this motion? Well, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve this? So moved. Second. Motion's recognized, to Mayor Portinmore, second to Councilman Andrew. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Before we entertain a motion to adjourn, are there any announcements from the DIAS?
Just wish everybody that's involved, and in town, a, a good market and safe market, and, uh, we're glad you're here.
Ms. Mayor, uh, point of privilege, on the 20th of October 2005, um, one of our local Marines, Lance Corporal Andrew Bersoli, was killed in action from Second Battalion, Second Marines, and now at Amber Promis. I just wanted to, uh, say that to his mother, that, um, Marine Corps remembers, and strength and honor to you.
Thank you.
If I could just say one more thing. So I did kind of mention, uh, during that public hearing about Doc Kearns, and I just wanted to say that she was such a pillar in our community and our state and for education, and I was so blessed to have gotten to know her so well in the work that I did with the Southwestern New Foundation. She was a mentor, she was one of the reasons I even ran. She taught me into, to running, and she helped me, and I just can't thank her enough for her mentorship to me, and, um, I just, prayers for her and her family.
Awesome, thank you. Any other comments or announcements from the DIAS? Want to recognize Ms. Bethay. I saw your name on an email today as an award winner at the upcoming NAACP banquet. Is that correct? Congratulations on your award, Ms. Bethay. Thought that was fantastic. For community advocacy, right? Okay. You know that was for all the emails you sent me, right? We accepted those emails in your honor, Ms. Bethay.
Thank you.
We were with you on that award. We celebrate with you.